Standing there. Well, he had told me that standing there is a big part of pictures. I'm standing there, but then he would get the, and also, right? The assumption that a front page is where the location was. And then, if you, if you're on the president's side, you're going up that area. There's like a big, that's outside. But, well, and that's what, and that's what you were told. And I had suggested that, and I said, he said he was gonna pull one of his screens out there. Right?
So do you have somebody graduating this year or not? Your youngest son?
My, my youngest son has a, so graduating, actually, so graduating.
Oh, okay. I don't know, I'll ask him, okay. Do you, do, okay, we'll see him, yeah, okay.
Ryan showed graduate class last year, you know, more of these this year.
How are you doing?
What are you doing, the invocation?
I do the publication.
All right, thank you, did you let it come down? Perfect, thank you, Jeff. Do you think you need to look at, do it, whatever?
I just gotta make sure.
Yeah, I don't think so.
No, thank you.
Did that get through?
Oh, yeah, okay, all right.
I had heard, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
No, it was, yeah, I told her here.
Yeah, no, I'm sure, yeah, like, yeah, since we, the stuff that is like, not, not as good.
Yeah, it was exciting, like, uh.
We're gonna call our regular council meeting to order. We're gonna have our invocation by Chaplain Paul Ellis, who's also a member of our Faith Alliance, which thank God for him, and will stand and also be led with the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Fitzgibbons afterwards.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, colleagues and friends, would you bow with me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this land and this city that we have the privilege of living in, for the freedom that we experience in this land, we do not take it for granted. We pray tonight for our leadership, that you'll give them wisdom in the decisions that are before them that must be made for the betterment of our community. We pray for our first responders, that you will protect them and keep them from all harm. And we thank you for all the blessings and privileges that we have in this great land. And we ask your direction and your wisdom upon these that make decisions tonight. We pray this in your name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Chaplain Paul Ellis. Thank you, Councilmember Fitzgibbons. Roll call and excuse Mayor McFarland, as well as Councilmember Bob Huddleston and Councilmember Jeff Lavender.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item C, our minutes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edwards, I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting on April 15th, 2024, and except for the record, the minutes of the Historic Preservation Commission meeting on March 25th, 2024, and the minutes of the Community Services Advisory Board on March 28th, 2024, as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Move on. Item D, claims.
Mayor Pro Tem Edwards, I move to accept, or I move for a payment of claims dated April 10th, 2024 through April 30th, 2024, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Amen. Item E, meeting agenda approval. We have any changes to agenda staff, Larry, anybody?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Edwards, we have no changes this evening.
Okay, all righty.
I move to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and also a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Moves on, now we're down to item G, consent agenda. All, all items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a member of the public so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of agenda. Counsel, any changes?
Nothing.
Staff?
We have none.
None? Public? No? Sure, a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem Edwards, I move to approve as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify, I'm sorry, Gloria, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edwards?
Yes. All righty, that brings us down to item H, which is our public comments. I'm gonna ask that if you wish to have words at the council meeting, know that the council cannot respond to your question or your statement that you're making. You have three minutes. When you do come to the podium, make sure you say your name as well as your address. So, at this time, I do have a couple in front of me, and so what, I'll start with you that give me your name already. Scott Barber, at this time.
Mayor Pro Tem Edwards, members of the council, my name is Scott Barber. My home is at 1173 East Avenida Elena, here in our fair community. I'm here this evening representing the Robert Bob Mitchell Tribute Committee, and specifically, our committee chair, Jerry Sullivan. We appeared before you in the second meeting in January to ask your permission to place a tribute marker in front of City Hall, recognizing the commitment, dedication, and, and long service of educator, mayor, council member, and city judge, Robert Bob Mitchell. And you gave us that permission, and right after that, we launched our fundraising efforts to, to achieve, hopefully, our goal of $35,000 to place that tribute marker here. I just wanted to give you an update this evening. We established a GoFundMe page, and also, because of the affiliation with the Kiwanis Club and, and the involvement of a couple of our members in Kiwanis, we also are doing fundraising through the auspices of, of the local Kiwanis Club. So, if someone does not feel comfortable going on a GoFundMe page, they're able to make a check payable to the Kiwanis Club, and Dan Anderson, Anderson and Sarnowski Accounting Firm on Cottonwood Lane, will collect those. And so, this evening, we just want to let you know that with about two and a half months under our belt, in terms of fundraising, our total stands a little bit over $15,000 toward our goal of 35. So, we're pretty happy about that, but we still have a ways to go. And so, our plea this evening is with our fellow citizens, those that perhaps have located other places that remember the tremendous positive impact that Bob Mitchell had on their lives and in their, on their community, to join us and go on and, and put some dollars toward the project. Like my old pastor used to say, "We don't want you to, to give till it hurts, we want you to give till it feels good." So, we're just encouraging everyone to participate. Again, if the GoFundMe page, if you just go on Google and put in there "Robert Mitchell Tribute GoFundMe Page," it will give you the link, and the, you can make your check payable to the Kiwanis Club care of, 550 East Cottonwood Lane, Suite C, which is the Anderson-Sarnowski offices here. And so, we appreciate all of those that have had a part so far. There's still opportunity, and we want to encourage everyone to participate. So, thank you for allowing me this evening to bring you our update.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. Next, we have Jean Henderson.
I didn't give you this, but this is, this is the, what I'm talking about, about the sticker in the cars. I don't know if you've seen this before. I picked this up the other day at the police. Okay. Jean Henderson, 449 North Dry Lake Street, Casa Grande, Arizona, 85122. And I showed you the sticker. This was the, the last sticker that they had at the police and fire department, so I wanted to know if you could, they said they could make more, and could you put them in and close them in with the utility bills, so that everybody could put them on their cars? "There needs to be some, sound, or sound ordinances regarding the, the trains coming through town, plus regarding the street racer, gangster, stalker, hybrid goons. Both put out entirely too much noise, especially at night around neighborhoods, and especially where I am. In Flagstaff and Yuma, the trains have to be quiet, but for maybe three to four whistles." Casa Grande is the hub for this stalker group who's spread throughout Arizona, and they need to be silenced, and the train is really too loud sometimes. A man I met on this, in a, in a shop about a month ago, said he has a podcast about this gangster, stalker, hybrid goons. He says they're real, and I do plan to meet with him again. Also, a Casa Grande police officer told me the town council has no power to make ordinances, so I'm asking, who does? Those breaking the laws? We, okay, "We the homeless, called Los Homeless, homeless by primary Iglesia Batista across from the main library, but those by some of the rare overnight people at churches. We are guaranteed rights under the U.S. Constitution. Besides paying taxes on food, clothing, gasoline, we have a right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and inalienable rights, as with all Americans. I talked with one PD sergeant on Sunday, who agreed and wondered why empty buildings aren't used to homelessness, homeless, so that we have safety over all nights. Also, why can't the Parrot Park toilet area be open for use? If work or cleaning needs to be done, I, I would bet that the homeless would help. And we still don't have a porta potty over there in the northeast corner of the library. On Sunday, 5/5, about 2:33 AM to 3:45 AM, there were three cop vehicles who went to Parrot Park and forced all the homeless to leave towards the railroad tracks. There are two physical, two to three physically disabled, and one woman who is visually handicapped at the park. She yelled, "Help." I was fearful to go to her assistance, I just didn't know what to do. They returned later in the morning, and I checked on them. Later that night, the park ranger drove by and said, "You can't be here, it's under police surveillance," and I'm wondering why. So, they were still, they were back today. "We are not causing problems except for an occasional altercation." Five, five officers showed up Sunday about noon, and I don't know why they were there. The recruit said he had to call the boss, whom was unknown, McCory or who, they didn't know. "We are not less than's, but Americans who have lost jobs, housing money, been kicked out by spouses, et cetera, and deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. All who disparage us need to try to exist as such for at least six months with only $200." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from our public which have comments at this time? Send the one else moving, yes, sir?
Hello, my name's Dean Dill, 707 West Choye Drive. Sorry, I'm not a public speaker, so I had to write everything down for you.
What was your name, I'm sorry?
Dean Dill.
Okay.
So, thank you, esteemed council members. I wish the others were here, 'cause this is a pretty intimate reason that I'm here. Today, I stand before you not merely as a concerned citizen, but as a custodian of legacy interwoven into the fabric of the city's animal control services. My Aunt Bonita, many of you may remember her, was one of the longest-running animal control officers since the 1980s. She unfortunately is no longer with us. My mother, Mary Dill, who many of you know, she was also an officer, and you might remember her from Radio Shack. My family, through the decades, have been with the department, and I feel it's a department that is underserved by the city. Under her unwavering guidance, my Aunt Bonita unmistakably made it clear that the, the mission for the department was to control rabies and the city's animal population. Sorry. She played a pivotal role in transforming that department from a modest 10-kennel facility on Sacatoon Street, void of written policies and community outreach, into a beacon of community service. From expanding the kennel facility to organizing biannual rabies vaccination events, monthly adoption drives and educational programs, she dedicated her entire life to serving both the citizens and animals with compassion. Yet, in recent years, a disheartening departure from the core mission and her hard work has unfolded. The department's name change alone, from Rabies and Animal Control to Care and Adoption Center, reflects this shift. It's a shift that warrants attention and demands action, especially since all the hard work that Bonita put in, such as the vaccination events, adoption discounts and educational programs, no longer exist. In my own recent experiences, I've witnessed the consequences of budget constraints firsthand. Calls to the department go unanswered, voicemails remain unheard, and animals linger unadopted. The simple act of answering a phone call could mean the difference between finding an animal a loving home or it languishing its life in that kennel. Despite the increasing demands of our growing city, that department remains unstaffed and underfunded. The burden of euthanizing animals due to overcrowding weighs heavily on the staff who already stretched thin. Citizens are often left to navigate animal-related issues on their own, turning to social media for assistance that should have been provided by that department. Whether it's locating lost pets, accessing vaccinations, or finding resources for adoption, the department's absence is felt by our community. In a recent conversation with the supervisor, I was disappointed to learn about the lack of accountability and vision from them. Excuses were offered instead of solutions, and the critical app, absence of adoption and vaccination events in recent years was dismissed as low priority since a business in the city does the same. And to my surprise, she actually stated that they were looking to raise adoption fees. This will only serve to push the public away from adopting at the adoption center. This chronic lack of funding and resources has become a recurring theme throughout the department's history, unfortunately. An outdated kennel facility was built without foresight for future needs, serving as a gathering example for the city's shortsightedness of that department. Budget cuts, budget cuts and staffing shortages only add to the challenge that they face as a department. It's evident that our city's neglect of the animal control services reflects a broader disregard for the welfare of our community and its inhabitants. I implore the city council to take action and address these systemic issues regarding that department. Our animal control services must reclaim their fundamental purpose of safeguarding both human and animal populations. Let us honor the legacy, let us honor the legacy of those who have dedicated their entire lives and restore, and restore the commitments that they put forward. It's very disheartening to know that so much work from my family went into that facility and that department, and they're not doing adoption events, they're putting them off on businesses, vaccinations that would turn out record numbers year over year. There's something more that can be done, instead of them continually being forgotten about. Thank you.
I just ask that you leave your number with our city manager and contact our city manager, right there, Larry, Larry Ains. Thank you. Anyone else from our public? If not, to bring our public comments to a close, we'll go down to item I, awards of contracts, Public Works Director Kevin.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the Mayor Pro Tem and City Council award a contract to Empire Caterpillar Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $355,411. And this is for the purchase of four Travis Endump trailers to be utilized by our wastewater reclamation facility. The essential part of the treatment process, processing of our waste, is to reclaim our water, and that comes in the, with our effluent, our A-plus effluent, that we're able to deliver to industries to use, our golf course for irrigation, as well as recharge in our Aquifer. The other byproduct from our process is our bio-solids, and we currently haul those out to our landfill, blend those with topsoil, and use that as an alternative cover for our landfill, which is required by our permit out there. We are asking to take advantage of the Omnia Partners Contract 212816-07 for the purchase of these trailers. We did budget $400,000 in this year's budget, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
We, we have a truck to haul these, that are gonna use an existing?
Yes, we actually were fortunate enough to purchase the tractor for that two years ago, when we first started this process. It's just now that we're able to find the trailers, so we're fortunate to have those available now.
What else? Okay. Thank you so much, Kevin, appreciate that. Gloria, get a resolution number.
Resolution number 5643. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Caterpillar Inc. for, for Endump trailers, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Caterpillar Inc. or its authorized dealer.
Mayor Pro Tem Edwards, I move to approve Resolution Number 5643 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Gloria, can we get a roll call vote?
Member McBride? Yes. Member Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edwards?
Yes. Now we're down to Item K, Orders, Resolutions, and Other Matters or Subjects Requiring Action by the Council. Okay, one, Deb.
Thank you for your time. Staff is looking for approval of Resolution 5644, which will adopt a fair schedule and fair policy for the Casa Grande Link Public Transit Service. It will amend the consolidated fee schedule to be able to incorporate fares, add fares to that fee schedule, and authorize city managers to provide the reduction of rates and establishing an effective date. I was here about a month ago, and I gave you an update on everything that's been going on. And just real quick, I wanted to let you know that as of the end of April, we've been operating since October 23rd, we've completed over 18,000 passenger trips. So we think that's pretty remarkable, and clearly, the public has embraced and accepted this service, so I'm really happy to report that. With regard to the implementation of fares, this is something that has been discussed since early on, back in the planning stages. It was decided by council in the near, I'm sorry, the five-year implementation transit plan, that there would be fares after a six-month free service. So with regard to the process, we did hold a public hearing. There was the open comment period. It was taken to TAC, and we have at least one member from the TAC with us this evening. After a lengthy conversation, the TAC did approve the movement or the recommendation of the fares that are presented to you this evening. And again, of course, we are looking for approval to move Resolution 5644. And I just want to reiterate that there's going to be two types of fares. We'll have a general fare, which is for individuals that are in the 16 to 59 years of age, and then a reduced fare category. And this is for other folks, and let me just describe them to you very quickly. This would be for seniors, anyone that's aged 60 or older, a disabled person of any age, a veteran with a valid ID, and that might be a VA card or a driver's license with the word "veteran" clearly marked, they've already been vetted by the MVD, and then youth, which are people the ages, between the ages of six and 15. Now, to be able to travel at the reduced rate, we will have an eligibility application. So if you are eligible, you know, we want you to apply so that when you travel, your fares will be a little reduced, less than the regular fare. And that will be a simple and easy process. That will be available as a handout. It'll be available online, and that would come directly to me. We'll process those very quickly so that people that are eligible can take advantage of that. With regard to the rollout of this, we plan on launching service with your approval on June 3rd, Monday, June 3rd. So that gives us a good four weeks to roll out our marketing and our outreach efforts, which includes many, many aspects, many things that we can do, such as the city Facebook, social media, rider alerts in vehicles, and at city places, and lobbies, libraries, and senior center, city hall, the CG Alert app. We have a lot of people that look at that with regard to the transit service, what's going on, so we're pushing information that way. We also will have two to three ads, display ads, in the Casa Grande Dispatch newspaper. We'll go to senior serving agencies, nonprofits, clubs. We'll share this information with other transits, such as the CART, the regional service that travels through the city, ADOT, Pinnell Heel Rides, which is an organization that represents a lot of the nonprofit groups that are receiving 5310 funding to provide transportation for their clients, and then just a host of other locations, Fiesta Grande, Mary T. Villas, The Garnet, Caliche. It will include some training on the part of the finance staff members over there because while we are not operating, we will not have a pass, as I shared with you, we're going to have an e-pass. So if people want to send in a check, walk in and make a payment, or do it by phone, they'll be able to, the staff in finance will be able to actually log into the software program we're using, RideCo, and then upload that information immediately for those particular riders, or if they're paying for someone else, a friend or family member. With regard to operations, our contractor, the RTW staff, whether it be drivers, the GM, or the dispatchers, they've been gearing up already in preparation for this. They're going through training as well on the financial modules that we've had turned off so far, the same training that finance will receive. We have notifications that are ready to go up in the buses tomorrow pending approval. We do have, we'll have a number of handouts in the vehicles. We'll try to find any and every opportunity to reach out to the individuals that might be using the service or currently are. And with the CG Link Rider app, we can actually push messages out to those individuals that have that app, and we know that on a monthly basis, 80 to 85% of people using the service are booking their trips through the app. So we feel like we'll really penetrate and reach a good number of our existing riders. We do anticipate a higher volume of phone calls, so they're gearing up, and they've been practicing already what they're going to say and how quickly we can get things expedited and educate the public. With regard to fares, that's always going to be difficult perhaps for some people, so we're going to be as lenient as possible through the month of June. I think that's the right thing to do. We can educate the passengers and share with them other ways that they can pay. If they don't want to pay by cash, they can go online or use the app. And myself and the RTW staff were available to help people to do it. I use it. I'm not really an app user, but I can use it pretty easily, so I feel comfortable that I can share that with others as well. And then with regard to fare box revenue, I just want to start out by saying that we do expect to see a drop in ridership. This has been anticipated. It could be as much as 40%. However, I will tell you, though, that we have over 1,200 unique passengers, riders. That means over 1,200 people have ridden once, twice, or multiple times. So that's a pretty good cross-section of the population. We know people are using it to come home from school, they're going to jobs, medical appointments, shopping, you know, all those types. Those are the regular. There's individuals that were taking it to job training and skills training downtown and Salvation Army and locations like that. So that being said, we still anticipate that over the next five to six months, we estimate we could see a revenue in the $14,000 to $16,000 with regard to fare box. In the next full year, it might be a fair conservative estimate to anticipate as much as $65,000 in fare box revenue. And again, these are conservative best estimates, but down the road, once we are using a different pot of funds other than the CARES Act that we're using now, these funds will be kept by the city to offset our local match. And that is my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Yes, sir.
So I'm pretty sure, but is there just no way to use like a credit card on the, or debit card?
Yes.
I mean, on the bus?
No, unfortunately, we don't have that ability.
Okay. But you can come in person to finance and do it?
Yes. Or over the phone, or you can easily call the dispatch office. You'll get a live person, and they can help you load that up as well.
Deb, thank you for the committee to get to this point, and you know, we knew this was going to happen, so it's going to be interesting, but I'm so excited to see the ridership and 18,000 that you've had so far. You know, I think the rates, you know, we've talked about this when you came last time. I think the rates seem fair, and especially when you put comparison to some of the other cities. So thank you for doing that, just to give us an idea of how we compare. I wanted to ask a couple things that I, and I'm sure, there's a lot of moving parts. I know we're going to change as we go along with this, but a couple things I wanted to ask, and I didn't see it on here, Deb, so excuse me if it is, but you talked a little bit about CART and the other transportation companies. Is there that, what is the machine called inside again that you're calling it?
The fare box.
Just the regular fare box. Is there a way to have a transfer on there? So if they're going to CART, are we working with them, or do they have to go to CART, get something, you know, with CART and have an app and do that kind of thing? Are we working together on the transfer?
Absolutely. That's a really good question, because at this time, we are working, we're in the process of becoming a member of the CART board, and we have an amendment that we're working out the details with the City of Coola Two as the operator of the CART service. And one of those points that we need to determine is transfers. So we haven't worked that out. We don't know what that will be. We can, we'll definitely be able to bring it back and taking it to the TAC as well. But at this time, they are not being charged. There's not an awful lot of people that are making that transfer, but if they are coming from the CART and getting on our service, at this time, we haven't charged them, and moving forward, we're going to handle that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. And then the second one we talked about early on were some type of voucher. So say, you know, the CG Helps Resource Center wants to pay for a couple people to get them to the doctor, get them to the grocery store. So how can they handle that?
Well, actually, that is going to be something we're going to be looking at in the near future. In fact, I have a meeting next week with the Pinnell County Juvenile Department that's at the Cottonwood Lane address, and they have youth and their parents that need to travel to the offices here, or possibly be connected from the CART or to the CART for travel into Florence. So we already have our first meeting coming up this week. I am attending the CG Links, excuse me, CG Help, Helps, meeting, and this is one of the items I wanted to bring up when I share the fares and the voucher program.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Deb, all the hard work that went behind all of this, just getting all this going. The vans, they look really nice in town.
I see them a lot.
Yeah, we see them a lot. They're moving, and so thank you so much for all that you do. All right. So at this time, Gloria, we have the resolution number.
Resolution Number 5644. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting a fair schedule and fair policy for the CG Link Transportation System, amending the consolidated fee schedule to include the new fares, authorizing the city managers to provide for the reduction of rates, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor Pro Tem Edwards, I move to approve Resolution Number 5644 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Gloria, roll call vote.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edwards?
Yes. All righty. That moves us down to K2, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem. Let me get my microphone on here.
There you go.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. We're at an exciting time in our process of creating the budget for FY '25. First off, I'd like to thank immensely Roberta for helping me to learn the process, as well as Larry and Stephen, to learn the process of the Casa Grande budgeting process. Budgeting can be so different in various cities, and it's been a great experience, I have to say. I'd also like to thank all the directors and their department staff for their assistance in providing us the information that we needed to be able to compile the budget. So tonight, we're going to talk about a tentative budget overview, FY '24, '25 revenue projections, personnel costs overview, FY '25 expenditure summary, capital improvement projects, and then last, we'll discuss the budget calendar. So the budget theme is through a renewed commitment and alignment with the long-term strategic plan, we will focus on open communication, teamwork, trust, self-awareness, results, and accountability to improve our community's quality of life, civic pride, and provide quality jobs. All of this was done with the city's vision, mission, and the commitment to service in mind, and I think it's crucial to meet the city's mission to provide a safe, pleasant community for all of their citizens. Tonight, we're going to focus on the operational and capital improvement program budgets. The proposed budget maintains current levels of service with minor modifications in most departments, in some departments, not most. General fund operating expenditures total $99.99 million is in the proposed operating budget. Operating expenditures across all funds is $369 million. Capital improvement projects totaling $235 million are included in the FY '25 proposed budget. Personnel expenditures continue to be the largest component of the city's operating budget. These expenditures include annual merit increase of approximately 3.2, an average of 3.25%. General salary adjustment of 5%, market adjustments to individual classifications based on a conducted market analysis, as well as retirement rate increases and employee healthcare plan increase This slide for the partnership funding, based on direction from council during the budget retreat, modifications were made to the partnerships' funding based on the requests that were previously made. These modifications had no effect, no increase or decrease, on the total amount of the budget presented tonight compared to the total amount presented at the budget retreat. The major assumptions that were used to build into the tentative budget, I previously spoke about the personnel expenditures that are included, so I'm not going to review them again here. The revenue assumptions were no additional revenue sources or enhancements. Local sales tax revenue impacts the general capital construction, youth, and recreation funds. These projections were based on a five-year trend, which was conservatively adjusted for possible legislative actions or an economic downturn. The general fund has state shown revenues, which include transaction privilege taxes, which are commonly referred to as city sales tax, urban revenue sharing, which is income tax, state shared transaction privilege tax, and auto and lieu tax or VLT tax. This chart represents the major sources, the major revenue sources in our budget, our projected budget. The FY '24 numbers on here are projected based on actuals earned and received to date. The local income, local sales tax net is 4.7% increase over last fiscal year. The franchise fees is a 21% projected increase based on the five-year projected forecast. The state shared revenues is a projected decrease, and that was projected by the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, the projections that they provided to the city. One question that everybody wants to always ask is, where do our city tax dollars go? Where do property taxes, where are they spent? The largest percentage of property taxes, 40%. The largest percentage of property taxes, forty percent, goes to the school districts. And then they are followed by Pinell County at twenty four percent, special districts at fifteen percent, Central Arizona College at fourteen percent, and cities and towns at seven percent. During the budget retreat, a question was raised regarding what the maximum tax rate the city could levy would be, and that rate would be one point oh seven six eight per hundred dollars of assessed value. The numbers on this screen reflect the calculation at the maximum allowable tax rate. The tax levy on a home valued at a hundred thousand dollars would be a hundred and seven dollars and sixty eight cents. This would be eleven dollars and twenty five cents per hundred thousand dollars higher than the property tax rate that we have included in the proposed budget. So the question was raised, how much would that overall increase be? And that increase in total in the levy would be six hundred and eighty five thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars. This is not the tax rate that we are proposing in the proposed budget for FY twenty five. So this next screen is the truth and taxation analysis for what we are proposing in the budget for this year, for FY twenty five. We are proposing to keep the... Is it not moving? Yeah, I did. So this is the calculation of the property tax levy with the proposal to keep the property tax rate the same at point nine six four three per hundred dollars of valuation. The levy calculation is based on the net assessed value minus the new construction that we have within the city. The maximum property tax levy the city can propose without doing a truth and taxation hearing is five million, five hundred and four thousand, six hundred and eighty six dollars. As the proposed budget proposes an increase in the property tax levy, the city will conduct a truth and taxation hearing on June third. The truth and taxation hearing is not driven by the rate, it's driven by the levy itself and the value of the levy going up. The last couple of lines on this slide are a bit confusing if you haven't delved into the calculation of this process. It indicates if the rate was not raised, and we are not proposing a rate increase, but that is the amount the city is above the rate where no truth and taxation is necessary. So I just wanted to try to hopefully clarify that bit of information. So this slide is the truth and taxation hearing notice that is required by Arizona revised statutes forty two dash seventeen one oh seven. And what I, one thing I want you to note is in the third line, it indicates the intention to base its primary property tax over last year's level. It is specifically states the property tax and not the tax rate. So some people think because we're raising the tax levy, we're raising the rate. That is not the case. The increase in the levy is primarily due to the increase in the net assessed values of people's properties. The note, this notice will be published in the Casa Grande Dispatch May fourteenth and May twenty fifth, as required by the statute. This slide, what I wanted to point out is the proposed primary property tax rate has not been increased since FY twenty two. We've been able to maintain that primary property tax rate. The secondary tax rate proposed is reducing due to the increased values in people's properties and reduction in the debt and debt principal and interest payments. This slide discusses the revenues, expenditures, and transfer summary that is compiled for all of the funds and projects out where we anticipate our fund balances being at the end of fiscal year twenty five with the proposed revenues and expenditures, which we've already kind of touched on. The total of all the funds, including all the general funds, special revenue grant funds, and the proprietary funds, sanitation, wastewater, golf, water, that fund balance it projected to still be a hundred and sixteen million, four hundred and sixty seven thousand, one hundred and ninety seven dollars at the end of fiscal year twenty five. There are changes and reviews for the rates and fees for the consolidated fee schedule proposed for FY twenty five, and it covers all departments who charge fees or for services, enterprise and governmental activities and services. They're focused on fair and reasonable rates and rate structures, based on the cost of providing services, operating expenses and revenue requirements, debt service and capital requirements, and appropriate recovery rate for those costs, customer-based collections and cash flow, and also to balance the needs of the residents, residential versus commercial, full-time versus seasonal, fixed income residence. This table consists of the consolidated fee increases that are being proposed on the consolidated fee schedule. There's one on here for the city manager's office that is not included on here, and that is the transit fees. And that will be added on the consolidated fee schedule that you'll be asked to adopt the fee schedule on June seventeenth with the final budget adoption. So on this slide, we have made a couple of modifications. We have added two new positions to the list. There are thirteen new positions proposed for the FY twenty five budget, and those are Assistant City Prosecutor, Deputy City Manager, Code Compliance Specialist, Heavy Equipment Operator, Equipment Mechanic, Fire Inspector, six firefighters, and a radio technician. The reclassifications, the nine reclassifications are same as presented in the budget retreat. This is a chart of all of the personnel expenditures by fund, or for all funds by category. And as you can see, the largest in here is the wages. Included in the FY twenty five budget is an overall two point seven five percent increase in the employee health and insurance package. There's no increase in the dental insurance program premiums due to the renewal providing a two-year rate lock. And similarly, there will be no increase in vision premiums as the city moves into the second year of a two-year rate lock. This slide discusses the city's expenditure limitations, which are statutorily set. The FY twenty five Economic Estimate Commission expenditure limitation for the city of Casa Grande is three hundred and two million, nine hundred and seventy one thousand, three hundred and eighty seven. The amount that is subject to limitation after exclusions that the city is allowed to take is a hundred and seventy five million, six hundred and forty seven thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. So you can see that we're significantly below the expenditure limitation allowed. The estimated exclusions that were anticipated as we prepared the budget were for HERF, grants, debt services, and any expenditure balances that are carried over from, or encumbrances that are carried over from FY twenty four to twenty five. We're all excluded from that. And this just is a comparison of actuals from fiscal year twenty three to what was budgeted for fiscal year twenty four in general fund expenditures. And the proposed FY twenty five and the dollar amount of change, the percentage of change is only point four three percent over fiscal year twenty four. This shows you the projected fund balance for the general fund, and the available fund balance will be projected at forty four million, nine hundred and seventy eight thousand, six hundred and seventy six dollars, which is sixty two percent of expenditures. So that is under the city's contingency requirements. This is a chart of general fund expenditures by category, and you can see here on this one as well that personnel is the largest of that. This bar chart shows you the explanation, or the expenditures by department. The orange color is the personnel costs, the lighter tan color is materials and supplies, and the darker blue color is contractual services. This chart shows expenditures by department in a different way. And this one shows it by fund, breaking it down into all of the various fund types. Next, we're going to talk about the capital improvement program. And this is the schedule of capital improvements that was presented at the budget retreat by department. And Public Works is running away with the largest portion of the expenditures this next proposed budget, which causes the capital projects fund to also be the largest fund for expenditures with enterprise funds, sanitation, wastewater, golf, all of those coming in under the enterprise fund category. So the next item is our key dates. First one is adoption of the tentative budget tonight. And then we have the publication of the FY twenty five tentative budget, property tax levy, truth and taxation, and notice of public hearings. The first publication of the truth and taxation, as I mentioned, is May fourteenth. The tentative budget, property tax levy, and notice of public hearings is May fourteenth as well. The second publication of the tentative budget, property tax levy, notice of hearing is May twenty first. And the second publication of the truth and taxation is May twenty fifth. Most of those deadlines are all statutorily driven, and we just have to calculate backwards from when we're anticipating doing final budget adoption to determine those dates. The public hearing on the fiscal year twenty five budget and property tax levy is slated for June third. Special meeting to adopt the FY twenty five budget is slated for June seventeenth, and then it will be posted on the city website on June twentieth. And then we will adopt the property tax levy. The first reading will be June seventeenth, the final reading will be July first. And that is the end of my presentation unless you have any questions.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Just a comment. Well, first of all, thank you, good job for your very first time. And Roberta, thank you for all of your help there. But no, of course, you know, this is such a long process to go through. And so, you know, to our, to all of our staff and department heads and, you know, just, I know there's been a lot of requests that are always given every year, and Larry has to go through it to see, you know, where, you know, we need to increase, you know, when it comes to staffing and, you know, resources. So, you know, we're, you know, increasing, I believe, thirteen positions out of the, Larry, I don't even remember how many you said were requested initially. Do you remember?
Forty seven.
Forty seven. So, you know, we know that there's always a need, but we appreciate our staff just always, you know, just stepping up and doing things different to be more efficient and effective. And so, thank you there. But, you know, we also, it's important to concentrate on, you know, keeping our staff and rewarding them and giving them their increases. So with the merit increase of three point two five, I think that's, you know, really important. And also our salary study, you know, to make sure that our employees are taken care of and we, and we keep our good employees. But I think the one thing that I noticed on this whole process that I'm happy to see, and we had this study session last week, was on infrastructure. And so in the CIP, we have, you know, a lot of money allocated towards the transportation and roads, and seven million dollars is going to go into more immediate traffic infrastructure. So, you know, we, we all know the, you know, the concerns and what we're facing, and so it's something that we, as staff and city council, are, you know, trying to dedicate monies to that. So, so again, thank you. There's, you know, obviously, this will be online for a while if anyone wants to go through and look at the fee schedules and everything else. So I encourage people to go on. If you have any questions, please, you know, feel free to reach out to us and staff. So, but again, thank you very much.
Just a comment, Brenda, thank you very much. I, you know, I think that the one thing that people will get out of this is whether they're raising taxes or not. I mean, we know that, and that's always a question. And so you were very, you know, very clear on that. And I know that we have some, you know, hearings coming up that people can comment on it. But for those that may have questions about the process, I'm sure that, you know, they can reach out to your office.
Yeah, they can absolutely reach out to me.
Okay, good, thank you.
So I want to say thanks because one of the most important parts of our jobs is managing the finance of the city and staff, all of you, Larry, all the way down makes it pretty easy for us because you guys do a thorough job, responsible, and manage to stretch those dollars while still providing a lot of key services and very good service for our residents. We always have some room for improvement, and we're always working on it responsibly. And one neat thing, just to echo what Lisa said, was, you know, we heard it loud and clear, and we know, and we've been working on it for a long time, is this infrastructure and how big a piece of our CIP that is. And I want to also reiterate what I said the other night, is you can't see all of the infrastructure that's going in. We're spending a lot of big money on some underground stuff, too, that's very necessary. So just stick with us, and it's going to be painful for a little bit while we do the roads, but it's going to be so worth it when we get that done. So I'm just proud as a city and just know that we are keeping the tax rate the same though the taxes are going up because your house value is going up. So it's a percentage of the value of your home, so that's why it is. And, you know, I still think that this is the best city to live in, and again, our budget reflects that. So we have a lot of amenities and a lot of stuff for the budget that we have, and we will keep improving on it every year. But again, thanks to staff and, you know, Roberta, I know came in pinch last year, too, doing great. And Brenda steps right in and does that as well. So great team over there and on this side of the table as well. So thank you all very much for, you know, kind of making it easy on us and helping us to understand everything.
I agree with what everyone said. Thank you so much for all the hard work that all of our departments have done to come together. But this also speaks to our citizens and let our citizens know that we are, we're working. We're trying to do our very best as quick as we can. We know some things are delayed a little bit, but we're so thankful that we're going in the right direction, let's just put it like that. We're going in the right direction, and it's for the best of our community, Casa Grande. So thank you so much. At this time...
Mayor Pro Tem, if I can, I don't want to belabor the item, but I just want to make a couple of comments for our residents' benefits. I know the council is well aware of this, but I heard a couple of comments, and I want to even paint a little more of the picture. Councilwoman McBride asked specifically about the process. I think it's important to know... I think it's important to note that this, while we've had budget retreats and the mayor and council have ultimately been seeing some of this data for over a month now, the reality of it is is that this is really the first step in the statutory process Ms. Hasler talked about just a second ago. And so, once the council considers the tentative budget, if you elect to pass that tonight, it really just gives us the pathway to actually start the publishing of this. It's been pointed out for it to be put onto our website with the public hearings that obviously our members of our community can attend, they can make comment. And we want to ensure that there's a full transparency in this. And ultimately, this process and timeline covers those particular items. Councilwoman Fitzgibbons talked specifically about personnel, and there is no doubt that personnel, when you provide services and programs, is always going to be a larger expenditure in the operational budget. We're not in common to any other municipality likely in the nation, certainly within the state. I do want to mention that we anticipate bringing before the council the staff complement with the various decisions that typically are made as part of this budget to the mayor and council on May 20th. So at the next council meeting, you'll be considering that particular item as well. And all of you have talked about the capital improvement program. There is no doubt that this is the largest capital improvement program that has been introduced in Casa Grande. It's $235 million that has been outlined. And I know that you've talked about a few of the projects. Obviously, a heavy emphasis on our wastewater expansion and infrastructure. A lot of times, people, unless they're disrupted because there's a line being run near their neighborhood, don't see the wastewater lines, the sewer lines, and those expansions. So it's important to note that over $100 million is included in this particular budget. Some of that carried over from the project that we've started this year, but obviously aggressive on that front. But by far, the most aggressive increase that we've seen this year is our roadway infrastructure. And about $70 million in total will be going into various roadway projects through a variety of funding sources. I think the important message that I want to send is that we're doing that again with no revenue enhancements. There's no proposed sales tax increases or property tax increases. And when you couple that with the fact that we are in a new world where we find that our various local options for tax revenues ultimately get challenged from time to time. We ultimately, you saw the decrease in the state shared revenues. We actually are expanding the level of service in police and fire. That's a carryover from fiscal year '24, but are doing that with no revenue enhancements. And so, I think all of those topics are important to notate just in summary. And again, I know there's been a lot of thanks tonight, but certainly thanks to the mayor and council for your guidance. The strategic plan is the document that we have governed, have utilized as our roadmap for the last five to six years now. Obviously, we summarize that in fiscal year action plans that get implemented. But ultimately, that is the guiding document, your participation and cooperation as we navigate to put together a balanced budget. Once this tentative budget is approved, when the final budget is finalized, it cannot be any greater than what you're going to approve in the expenditures tonight. So with that, I would pause. I've said enough. You can, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
I just had one comment from Larry. So May 20th is where I'm going to look at our rate and fee schedules as well.
I believe the rate and fee schedule is scheduled for June 3rd.
June 3rd, okay.
That's right.
I just want to let everybody know that. Because that'll be important, too, on the revenue side.
Thank you so much, Larry. Appreciate that. At this time, we have a resolution number.
Resolution number 5645. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the tentative estimate of the amount required for the public expense for the city of Casa Grande for fiscal year 2024 through 2025, adopting the tentative budget, setting forth the receipt and expenditures, the amounts actually levied and the amounts estimated as collectible for the previous fiscal year and the amounts proposed to be raised by direct property taxation for the various purposes, and giving notice of the time for hearing taxpayers for adopting a budget and for fixing the tax levies.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards, I move approval of resolution number 5645 as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Gloria, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
Yes. All righty. It moves us down to item N, which is our reports. Donna?
Oh, you're going to start with me. Okay. Just a couple of quick things. This is municipal clerk's week, and I just wanted to highlight Gloria and her staff. You guys do an incredible job at keeping us going. So thank you very much for the work you do. A couple of quick kudos. The Elks Lodge did a banquet on Friday night, and they celebrated all the student of the months that they have. And they also named teenager of the year, which was our own Anthony Omato from our youth commission. So it was very nice to be a part of that. I also attended the police memorial last Thursday in Florence. And I just wanted to thank Officer Anderson, Lieutenant Price, and then Chaplain Ellis, who are all there representing us. And it was very heartfelt, and it was good to have Casa Grande PD there. So busy time for everybody. I also had the opportunity to do a ride-along and help with the Meals on Wheels. And what an eye-opener that was. Raylene and the community services staff do such a great job. But I just have to tell you, the driver that was on that, that I, he was, he meant business. And I think there was 31 or 32 folks on that route. And he knew every single person by name, address, without looking at a book. And I was, I was so impressed with that. So anyway, thank you for letting me do that as a ride-along to learn more about that program. And that's it.
Thank you. Couple of quick ones. Saturday morning started out with the youth, or Friday night, we started out setting up for the annual youth government summit. And Saturday morning, we had the youth government summit at the rec center. Had Superior, Florence, Gila River Indian Community, and student council from Vista Grande. And Superior all came down and had a great turnout. And special thanks to the mayor, Teresa Martinez, the county attorney, Kent Volkmer, county supervisor Steve Miller, all came, spoke to the kids, and they really got a lot out of it. So it was a great day. Then I wrapped up the evening at Harazak Chin for the annual Penal 40 event, which is a very nice event. And that organization gives a lot of money to kids in Casa Grande and around the county. And I have to say, it's one of the best ones I have attended. Had Drake Milligan, a great country singer. And it was a lot of fun, and a lot of people were there. And it was a beautiful event and a great worthy cause. And one point of personal privilege is tomorrow, I get to go to my younger daughter's graduation with her master's degree at ASU. So I'm excited for that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank Scott Barber and the PIO group for the leadership graduation. Councilmember McBride and I and the mayor were there. So it's so great to see those people participate. And, you know, Scott, it's so nice to see them wanting to get involved, you know, right after. I know that a few of them have joined some of our boards and commissions. And so, I know it was a positive experience for the couple that I did talk to and sat with. The Faith Alliance, the mayor had his last mayor's luncheon. He did a great job. So he's not here, but we thank him for always participating and dedicating his time and energy to that group. We had the Penal County Coalition, and homelessness had a housing roundtable. And it was really nice. I know Councilmember McBride were there, and the mayor came by really quick. But there's so much discussion on affordable housing and especially rentals, you know, for people that can't purchase homes. So it was a really nice roundtable, bringing, you know, landlords together, property managers together, and community services, you know, that are trying to help people and brainstorming on how we can get more homes and more people to offer their homes at an affordable rate to people that can't afford these high rents and can't afford homes. So it was a nice brainstorming. There was different agencies that were there that represented, you know, the, gosh, I don't know, there was all kind, Housing Authority, Access Housing, DES, different agencies, CARA, the county. So a lot of people just coming together to see how we can join efforts. And that's going to be a regular meeting that will be ongoing. Cottonwood Ranch had their groundbreaking over here on, gosh, what road is that on? Again, Larry, what is that? O'Neill? And so, that is going to be a Lytec Low Income Tax Credit Apartment Complex. And it's beautiful. It has, you know, the whole, they have their rendering there and a great group of people that are excited to provide this project in Casa Grande. So I was happy to participate at that. And the, as far as events, the Dia de los Niños, I know I talked to Danny about this. It was a great event, and it was so exciting to see. It's the Day of the Children, of the Child, and in our Latino community. And it was a great, I don't know how many of you went, but it was a great activity and so exciting to see all these little kids having a good time. So thank you to the Parks and Rec Department for, you know, these events that you have, and especially celebrating the different cultures in our community. So thank you to your group. They did a great job with all their sponsors and giveaways and activities. And then, you know, Matt, you talk about graduations. And this is the time of year for graduations. And, you know, we have high school graduations that are coming up. I'm so happy to see, you know, all these graduates. And there's so many different, you know, the Rotary Foundation, great job on the Rotary Foundation, Penal 40, the Caesar Chavez Group. All of us are involved in many of these groups that are providing scholarships to our high school seniors. So, you know, it just means so much to these kids. And so, it's exciting to see them going on to continue their education, either in community college or universities. But we, you know, also want to remember people graduating with advanced degrees, you know, bachelors and then masters and doctorate. I had a graduation for my daughter also that got her master's degree last week. And so, you know, when you go to these graduations, you know, it's so exciting to see all these Casa Grande people. But when you go to these graduations, there's so much that's behind that degree, you know, and so much blood, sweat, and tears that go into graduating. And I saw it when I was there. I, you know, felt it, and you probably go through this with your child, everything that they go through, you know, the time, the money, the energy, and all the love and support that they get in those years of continuing their education. And I, you know, it's just, you know, you're just so proud to see so many people that are, you know, doing this and getting all the support. And it's a community like this that provides scholarships that help these kids go on and then, you know, understand the importance of continuing their education. So I just want to congratulate all the families that are, you know, that have, you know, family members that are receiving their degrees. It's just such a big deal. So, and we're proud, we're proud parents of that, too. So I think that's it for me. Yeah, thank you.
Just want to say, once again, the Faith Alliance, the wonderful meeting that we had with our mayor, who was our guest speaker. Really appreciate him and all the work that he's done. We're working with our faith-based community and bringing our pastors together and things like that. And we've been doing that for a while. And so, so thankful for the opportunity to be a part. I also want to say thank you to all of our leaders that came for the National Day of Prayer, which we had out in front of city hall. And I know it was on graduation day. I know Lisa was at graduation. Myself, Donna was there as well, and the mayor, and a lot of our leaders in our community was there. And so, we had a wonderful time with prayer out in front of city hall, as well as we had a drive-through prayer outside on the other side of city hall. And so, so thankful with all the leaders that came out. One thing that we're doing, we're breaking down some barriers, some walls, and we're working together. This community has always been a loving community, one that always helped each other. And we serve each other, and we help each other. And I'm just so thankful that we're still doing that, and it's going forward, and it's getting better. It's getting better because we're still working together and we're serving together. My niece got her master's at ASU. ASU. So happy for her, too, as well. And so many graduates that we have in our community. Let us continue to encourage our youth, encourage our children, and continue to strive to do and be their very best, as well as I strive my best to represent the mayor on tonight.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
So I hope he is pleased. Brett had to get on me a couple of times. But other than that, I think we did all right. We earned it out. So just appreciative to be able to serve. This is going to conclude our meeting for tonight.
Good job, Andrew.
Good job.
Well said. Well said. At the end.